Fumi... Fumi... I was like... Well, I was in a VC when I told you I was leaving. And so, um, I hopped into that VC. And then, I was setting up for stream while in the VC. And then, I was just going back and forth. Do I wanna stream? Do I wanna not stream? Do I wanna stream? Do I not? Do I... And then, I finally decided, okay, we're just gonna stream. So, it was really just spur... Spur of the moment. It really was. I'm sorry, Fumi. I'm sorry, but I appreciate it. I appreciate it, though. I do. I really do. You actually such a troll. Oh, you bet. You bet. You know that. You know it, Fumi. You know it. You know that 100%. But hello, Mr. Teaspoons. Hello and goodbye, Mr. Teaspoons. Hello, Rui. I feel like you two are always the first ones here. You two are always the first ones here. And then, Fumi is just kind of like, "I just ended, and now you're here." I am right now just setting up some last-minute things. Um, hoping that they work. Because as you guys can see... As you guys can see, we have a new background. That's not what I wanted, but let me go back here. Let me go back here. We're gonna change... I don't wanna show you ours. Hmm... Can I refresh that? Labels... Counters... Then... Digit numbers. We're gonna make that white. Refresh? Hmm... I honestly am trying to figure out how to use... This timer. And hello, Lemon. How are you? That's late for you. How are you, Lemon? Hmm... Label size, counter colors. I want them to be white. Hey, I might fall asleep? Wait, hey, I might fall asleep? It's okay if you fall asleep. Thank you for stopping by. Today is really just... It's really just gonna be a really casual chill, just chatting stream while I do some work. And I thought, you know what? It would be nice to have some company. It'd be nice to have some company. So, here we are. And thank you, Say2, for the lurk. Thank you, Say2, for the lurk. Let me see if I just do... Um, I... Not your name. Or just... Hmm... Properties? Paste. Okay. There we go. That's what I want. So, what we're gonna do... What we're gonna do is 25 minutes of just you guys hearing me type away. And then, I'll do 5 to 10 minutes of chatting with you guys. And then, we'll go back to 25 minutes of studying until I get all my stuff done. That is... If I exit this hour, does it still go? Yeah, it does. Okay, that's good to know. That is good to know. I really wanted to find something... I'm impressed that you can work and stream at the same time. You know what, Fumi? We make it work. We make it work. That's literally what it is. Fumi, I literally listen to your chat while I work. We make it work. Yes. That is what that is called. I don't know how to say that. I don't know how to say it, so that's why we just go with... Um... 25... I... Is that how you say it? Pomodoro? I'm trying to see where my borders are from my head. I don't think it's the best time to listen to my stream and study. Um... Not right now, but like, normally, you stream when I'm like studying? You normally stream when I'm studying, and so, sometimes you'll be doing random stuff, or sometimes you'll be singing, so it's just like... It's... Pom... 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 En... Spanish? Well, like, most of the time you're streaming, like, I'm just studying, and so... Um... Background noise. As I readjust in my chair. Background noise. 'Cause who doesn't love background noise? Let's see. I have a whole list of things that I need to do. But today has not been a day for me to do them at all. Oh, that's why it looks like that. So, today's just gonna be a very relaxed stream. I don't hear a lot of clicking and typing and kiki-kick kicks. Oh, I forgot to tell you guys. So, we got a new background. Fair enough. We got a new background. For those of you who are here right now, this is what the inside of the Mushroom Hut looks like. As you can see... Let me just... Turn myself away for a little bit. We have... We have all the stuff that I use at the Magical Academy. We have the potions, the spellbooks. I cleaned up a little bit. This is what the... This is what it looks like inside the Mushy Hut. This is what it looks like inside the Mushy Hut. And my laptop. Yash... Ya... Yep... Hmm... Yashub... Woo-hoo? Hello! I remember trying to attempt your name last time. How are you? How are you? Also, Rui, how are you? And Fumi, how are you? Well, Fumi, I talked to you not too long ago, but still, how are you? Good? That's good, Rui. How was your morning so far? Uh... Afternoon, really. Fumi, how are you? That is how I feel. Dot-dot-dot. Well, Fumi, I feel like you were streaming for a while, weren't you not? Oh, that's so cute. Wait, I'm gonna... That's so cute. We're just gonna do that, so I can save it. 5 hours? I have... My streams are never that long. Lemon! 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 Oh my gosh! Wait! Lemon! You're too sweet! Thank you for the gifted subs! Oh my gosh! Oh my gosh! Thank you for the gifted subs! I'm speechless. I'm speechless. Lemon, I thought you... I... Yes... You... You said you were going to sleep! Lemon... It's... Thank you, Lemon! Oh my gosh! Oh, you're too nice, Lemon. Oh my gosh! I'm... I'm s... You're still awake for now? I'm s... I... I d... Wait! Wait! I... Writing down notes. No! I get very flustered! My face is turning red again. Hold on. Oh my gosh! It's better than what I do, Nix... Yeah, my face is like... Thank you, Lemon. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You're way too sweet. Nix gets red. Nix gets red a lot. I also get red when I drink alcohol. Wait, Fumi, what notes are you writing down? You sound like you're on the verge of tears, cutie. Breathe. Oh, Nix. You're sweet. Also, hello, Nix. I didn't know that you popped in. I didn't know you popped in until now. Oh, my cheeks hurt. Oh... My cheeks hurt. I'm smiling so much, my cheeks hurt. How to troll you in the future? Fumi... Fumi... Oh, my cheeks hurt! I'm... I feel like my face is right now just stuck in a smile. And I can't... I can't stop. Oh... 'Cause I fanned my face again. My cheeks are... My cheeks are... Thank you for the hy... Hydrate. I do have a water bottle here. I do have a water bottle. Oh, my cheeks. Oh, they're so stiff. Oh... Thank you for the hydrate. Thank you, thank you. Thank you again, Lemon, for that. Let me re-attempt this whole thing again. We're gonna refresh this timer. We're gonna re... We are gonna re-attempt this. Oh, my cheeks still hurt. I'm still smiling. Oh my gosh. My brain has just suddenly stopped working. What was I gonna click on? Oh, this is what I needed... No, that's not what I needed to click on. This is what I needed to click on. My brain stopped. What am I trying to do? This. This is what I'm trying to do. My brain is just... It completely stopped working. Oops! Oopsies! My bad. My bad, my bad. You were telling... You were telling you were not menacing. I am mean! I feel like it's so hard for me to say it right now. I'm mean and menacing. But it doesn't even sound possible when I'm laughing. It doesn't even sound like... It sounds like I'm saying it as a joke. Because... Because I'm... I'm... I'm laughing. And I'm still smiling. I am mean and menacing. I am very mean and menacing. So, I attempt to find my chapstick again, my lip balm. 'Cause I've lost it again. I just saw it. Where'd it go? Where's the other... Let me see. Where's my other one? We can't find the main one. We'll find a backup. I'm going to do work for 25 minutes, and I will talk to Yel for like 5 to 10 minutes after. Where it proceeds to talk to Chat for 15 minutes. She is convincing. Okay. Okay, Fumi. You have a point. You have a point. Let me get started on my work. Let me get started on my work. I actually do have a page that I need to work on, pulled up. I was just trying to find my chapstick. I am very convincing. I'm very convincing, and I'm very mean and menacing. That enough should tell you everything. Oh, these things are making me... They make me think a lot. And I'm just like, I don't wanna think. I don't wanna have to think while I type these things out. Hmm... Go catch some Pokémon, guys. Fumi, go catch some Pokémon. As I pick up. I'm trying to answer this question, but I just don't know how. Hmm... Oh, I have one, actually. Catch Pikmin? Catch Pokémon? Poki-man. Pokémon. Oh, I can't even spell. I can't spell. This is why we have spell check on. Still can't spell. How do you spell this? As an S N. Just copying this that. There's only parts of this. We love guessing on questions and getting it right. What is this word name? I don't know what that word is. I guess this one, but I don't know if it's right. Hmm, got it. We're just gonna guess, can maybe we do this one anyway as things. Cool. I think I, there we go. Hey. Wait, did I not do this one? No, I get that one. This one's next. Um, one, two, three, four, five, six. Ooh, that's a lot still. Let me, let's see, let's see. I'm gonna write down. This is done. This is done. I still need to do that. We're in the process. Let's, let's finish this one tonight. We'll finish this one tonight. Um, what else do I wanna do tonight? Oh, I should have had that assignments. And the syllabus, actually. So I haven't looked at that class yet. Oops. Oops. That's not a good thing. Um. I might as well look at that syllabus as well. I'm this far into this mustard, I ha- I barely even looked at the syllabus for either one of the classes. That is not good. That is not good at all. Oops. Oopsies, my bad. Wait, what is this? I need to mute that so you guys don't hear it. And then we're just gonna do... We're just gonna do that and see how it goes. I think my own musings would make me fall asleep. That would be bad. But it's so nice and relaxing. Am I supposed to read this too? Okay, so, uh, twenty, twenty some minutes are over. I'm very confused about this assignment. Um, your words per minute sounds like it's around eighty to a hundred. Um, I think last that I did a test. The fastest that I recorded. Fastest recorded that I remember is ninety-two words per minute, per minute. Um. But I definitely range between like the seven, seventy and eighty. For sure. Between seventy and eighty words per minute. And I'm trying to get it to be faster. Which sounds stupid. Which sounds stupid, but honestly, I do a lot of typing. And being able to have a faster typing speed would be great. But honestly, I still think I type really slowly. I think, I personally think I type really slowly still. Um, I know other people will agree. Or disagree. They say I type really fast, but I personally think I type really slow. Oh, I, I. Yeah, I'm always working on my typing. I also have, um, an ergonomic keyboard too. I have an ergonomic keyboard that helps with my hand position. And so I use that to type as well, but I type a lot slower on it. I mean, my words per minute was like thirty? Thirty? Mine is around seventy to eighty right now. That's good, but I don't, I also like don't type correctly, accurately how I sh- how people should be typing. Oh, for me, I'll show you a picture of my, um, ergonomic keyboard. Looking fine. Fast is like one-twenty above. Yeah. I know some people who can ta- type that much. I know some people who can type that much. Thirty to forty is average? Are you serious? I used to get made fun of because my, um, words per minute was thirty. I used to get made fun of it for that. Cause everyone else's speed was like at ninety, one hundred, and here I was with like thirty, forty? And so everyone would make fun of me for my, um, words per minute. It was, it was a stupid thing to make fun of before. But that was really what I was made fun of for. Was that, was being s- a slow typer. I think that's stupid, but at the same time, like... Kids be kids. Kids w- kids are gonna be mean. And rude. But it's just kind of like, uh, yeah. Cause then like when you're like that young, you don't really think about it. You just think like, oh. People are mean. Which people are mean? People are mean. You have to think about the boomers. That's true, that's true. Is that why your chat always says, always chas- always says Boomer Hands? Because they are gamers? Hmm. Hmm, that was a long yawn. That was a very long yawn. Maddie! Congratulations on your debut! Congratulations! How was your twelve hour stream? Also, this is what I was, this is, I bought this right before stream, and this is what I was setting up. Cause if you guys, I don't think you guys can hear it over the music. That's good. You know, guys, I'm kinda stupid? I've had music on this whole entire time? And you guys couldn't even hear it? Lighting up Boomer Hands since I stop at all and every game? I hear rain sounds? Okay, so there's rain sounds? And apparently I wasn't even realizing it, I've had music playing in the background? Um, do you guys prefer music or do you guys prefer the rain sound? Cause I could do either or. I'm around thirty to fifty forever? I feel like I've been trying to get out of that range for sure. But it definitely is hard. It definitely is hard. Maddie! Thank you for the sub. Thank you for the sub, Maddie. You even didn't have to. Oh my gosh. Wait, no, we can't do this again. We can't do this again. I didn't help at all. I was, I was just there for support. Cheeks, stay down. Stay down. Thank you again for the, for the sub. Being there in DC. Helped too much, aww. I'm sorry I couldn't stay that long. Yeah, I thought I'd just hop in and say hello. Ally! Ally! I haven't seen Ally in a while! Ally, welcome, welcome, welcome! Welcome, Ally. How are you? If I can spell, this would be great! You see me all the time? I'm doing amazing, I'm glad. I'm glad. Ally, do you not have any clips? Ally doesn't have any clips, I'm sad. You're doing amazing, I'm glad. Aww. Aww, no clips? That's okay. That's okay. Well, I'm glad you could, I'm glad, thank you for the grade, and I'm glad you can make an ally. No one really watches my streams? Aww, Ally! Aww, I did see, I did see on Twitter that you had posted you were streaming. You're guilty, yay! I'm glad it was fun, I'm glad. That's good. I'm very tempted to light this candle now that I'm looking at it. But I have a bad experience with lighters. And I don't know what to do now. I'm not looking at it, and I'm just like, I wanna light this candle. Chat, should I light my candle? It's vanilla. Fumi, before you even say anything. Yes, I like vanilla. Okay? Before you even say anything. No, no lighting the candle? You'll burn down your house? Um. I don't think I'll burn it down. The fact that I had to delay that was kind of funny though. I will not be burning down my house. I will not be burning down the house. No houses will be burnt. Yet. Not my house, at least. Oh! For the raiders who are here. Crush X to doubt. For the raiders who are here, I am Nixoliander, and you guys are inside my mushroom house right now. This is Ally, this is the mushroom house, this is the inside of the mushy house. Mushy hut. This is the inside of the mushy hut. We actually came and had a really good time, both you and Maddie. Because um, this is my, my little, little break between studying. I like vanilla. What are we talking about? Oh, so I had recommended to Fumi the other day to try a tea with vanilla in it? And he texted me saying like, are you sure? This doesn't seem like it would be good. And I was like, it's good, it's good. And then, I had just said like, oh, like I looked at my candle and I wanted to light it, cause it's vanilla scented. It's sandalwood and vanilla scented, which smells really good. Cause I don't normally like candles, but this one smells really nice and it's relaxing. And so I do, I like, I very much enjoy the scent and smell and taste of vanilla. Are you living inside a home made of your own flesh? I don't know. Am I living inside a home made of my own flesh? Or is... The home made out of me? You should try incense. I have incense. I have a lot of incense. A lot. A lot. A lot of incense. I just don't have it in my room. That's the difference. That's the only difference, it's not in my room. Also, hello, Mr. Teespoons. I didn't know you were still here. You know what? I'm gonna go light, I'm gonna go light it. We're gonna bring the candle over to another room. Um, where I know a lighter's not gonna break the second I touch it. So I will be right back. Bye, Mr. Teespoons. Have a great day. I will be, give me like three minutes, I'll be right back. Why does my screen? What's in this arm, wait? Wait, what's going on? What's going on? What's going on? I lit, okay, so first of all, first of all. I had to go, I had to go, so I went to the first room. Went to the first room, the first room didn't have a lighter. Went to the second room, didn't have a lighter, so I had to go downstairs and get a lighter. Okay, okay, okay. Uh, went to a cable car, now going to some hot springs? Ooh, fun! What are we studying? We are studying the law of life. No, 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 it's okay, Ally. Go to bed, Ally. Go to bed. Thank you for the raid again. Thank you again for the raid. Have a good night. False sleigh, or sleigh, thank you for the. Okay, I'm gonna ask you. Do you want me to hydrate with water? Do you want me to hydrate with kombucha, or do you want me to hydrate with an energy drink? You have choices. We have choices today. We have choices of liquids today. We have choices of liquid. We have water, we have, you're telling us you aren't, so you're, wait, 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 wait. Um, you sound a bit low, I can barely hear you. Ew. Um, let's see. Honestly, I don't know why. I also think I'm just speaking a lot softer. Um. Let me do, let me do this. Actually, we'll, we'll do this. You guys can hear um, just the raining sounds for now. And then you guys should be able to hear my voice better? Question mark? Question mark? I can be able to hear you hydrate with water, not energy drinks. Ally is grabbing you from energy drinks. Facts. Energy drinks are bad for you. Yeah, you know, I'm still alive. I'm still alive, it's okay. I'm still alive, it's okay. I don't drink when I say like energy drinks. I try to stick with the all-natural energy drinks. That contain like the coffee bean extract. Or the green tea extract. I don't, I don't drink Monsters, I don't drink Red Bull. You can bring the mic closer to you, uh, the mic is actually right at my mouth. Or increase your gain on the mic. What's, oh, you know what? I might have changed it earlier. Um. Noise gates, compressor. Um, let's see, noise suppression. Resonance, let's see. Increase gate? How does this sound? Wait, let me just pull up my phone as well, actually. You guys are, you guys might hear some static. You guys might hear some static. Wait, I feel like. You guys can hear me now? Audio's fine? Okay. So maybe we'll just keep it at that. We'll just keep it at that for now, and if I ever need to change it. Goodnight, Ally. Breaking news, Nix found dead with an energy drink in hand. Um. Yeah, we'll see. We'll see, we'll see. That might happen in the future, but um, I, I do try to limit how much caffeine I have in a day. I really do. Um, I haven't had that much caffeine today, which is why like I crashed halfway through the day. Okay, thank you for the hydrate sleigh. Sleigh, sleigh? Fumi, you already know how much caffeine I drink in a day. I ha- I didn't drink any coffee this morning. I had green tea. And that was literally it. I crashed at two PM. And I haven't had anything since. Actually, I ha- yeah, I really haven't. But hello to everyone who has joined in. Or anyone who joined in when I left for a moment to go light my candle. Now we are going to go back. And... We're gonna go back for a little bit. I will talk to you guys in about twenty-four minutes. Enjoy the typing sounds and my confusion. Cause I'm very confused about what I need to be doing. Hmm. Um, Fumi, I would say... That might work. But it's also just kind of like... It's also kind of like when you're so tired to the point where your... Body is basically saying sleep? Or get more caffeine? That's kind of where I'm at on a daily. Can I, is this muted? Yeah, it is. I take cold showers daily. I'm also just realizing this now, is that you guys are only hearing the... Um. That should be okay. That really should be okay. I take cold showers daily. Good for you, Saytoo. I could never. I could not. Encounter chat in chat? What's a chat? Cha- Hmm, I'm trying to figure out what I'm supposed to do for this. And this is taking a lot longer. Than I anticipated. Hmm. What is her name? I think I need to start from here. Oh, that's her name. Oops. Um, we're gonna copy and paste that, cause I did that wrong. Delete that. Yes, delete. Cause that's not where I wanted it to be. Oops. Submit. There we go. There we go, there we go. Now I did that right. Ew. Hmm. Hmm. Oh, now that you mention that, the fact that, oops, I probably should, um. Oops, I'm very sorry, I didn't think about both of those together. Give me one second and let me fix my mic input and output. We'll do that. Maybe... That will sound better. Maybe not so bad on the ears. I hope. I hope. I will read all of those messages after the seventeen minutes, but I did, I, I look at them, I'm just not reading them yet. So I hope that fixes the audio sounds for you so far. Also, I appreciate everyone who is joining me tonight, I will say that. I do appreciate your comp- everyone's company tonight. Also, Lazoo, this is inside the mushroom hut. This is the inside of the mushroom hut. Oh, this is an interesting one. Oh, this is so sad. I know, I like it too. I did not know that. That is interesting. Huh. Also, if I fall asleep, someone play a sound alert. Any of them. This is such a sad article. Oh wait, if this is hurting, let me switch up my keyboards for you guys. Oops, I unplugged it. Let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch up my keyboards for you guys. Heading to bed. Have a good night, Lazu. Have a good night, Lazu has to get. I was fine with the keyboard. You're okay with it? Cuz I have this one's much softer. It's not as clicky. Whereas this one is much clickier. That is nice. I'll stick, I'll go with, I'll go with my other one for now. It's a much softer clicky sound. Good night, Lazu. Sweet dreams. It's gonna say the same thing when you either is fine. I'll go to, I'll go to the other one. Oops. Um, question mark. Wait, what's the difference before I submit my answer? Um. Mute that. What did this? Oops. I forgot to mute it before playing it. What? What? Um. I can't do this until tomorrow. Uh, I need Um, I hate this assignment. Why are you making me do this? At least I'm doing it a day early and I actually have time to do this. Um. Ah. Um. The question is who? Um. What am I supposed to do? I forgot. Um. So we're just gonna copy and paste that for now. A copy and paste that into a little sticky note. Um, I see the timer is out. Let me put this into a, let's see. Sticky notes. Let me go into that one cuz that was the end of that. Let me go back to here. How many? Okay, so now I have one, two, three, four, five. Five more. That's still a lot to be honest. And I can't go forward without doing that one. Okay, let me, we're bringing chat over here. It's about to be tomorrow in seven minutes for you. I know, I know. Wait, wait. You guys talked a lot, actually, which is good. I, it's, I, I want you guys to talk in chat when, when I'm, when I'm doing my typey types. Um, okay. Now I for the, let's see, let's see. We stopped when, have you considered cold showers in the morning? They can give you energy. Ye- no, cold showers. And encounters chat in chat. What is it, chat? When I, now, when I first started, I froze into an ice cube, but got used to it over time. Now I'm just like, yep, this feels amazing. I could not. Technical term for chat is a large lake. I don't know whether or not to believe Fumi or not, but for the slang version of it, it is someone that has everyone's respect since they are awesome in every way, that, that you are just in awe in just being in their presence. For some reason, I don't think that's right. Ooh, Lazu caught hoppy. The click sounds hurt my ears. The only reason why is cuz I mod keyboards, AKA, AKA keyboard fanatic. It's just one of those things. Once you get, get in, you can never go back. Very, it's very cozy and cute. I like the rain. I do like it. See, I was fine with the keyboard. Um, either is fine. So the first keyboard I used probably has blue switches. If you want me to, I don't remember which key, which switches these are. I can pop one off quickly though. This, the, this one I didn't make. Yeah, these are blue switches. Um, the first keyboard is blue switches. First one is blue switches. My thingy just went away. Um, second keyboard, this one I can't take out. Uh, I did buy these though. The second keyboard, I did buy my switches cuz the switches they came with originally were, um, too sensitive. Too sensitive to where like I wouldn't be doing anything. And my, I was playing Genshin on this computer, on this, on this keyboard. And I wouldn't be touching the keyboard and the, um, character would just be walking forward. And so I bought new switches for it. I just don't remember which one I bought. They're, they're definitely not, um, the blue ones though. They might be lonier switches. I believe these are clear. I don't have the thing to pull out the keycaps worth right now though. Next, what, what, next, what are these sounds? The, that sound was my brain working and my fingers typing on the keyboard. Hiccups, 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 hiccups. Um, this cute goober, Yuguchi boss, it is about to be tomorrow in seven minutes for you. Rip might be tactile then. Um, let me look at that really quickly cuz I got them off of Amazon. Did I? Ooh, I don't remember actually. Amazon, Amazon, Amazon. Stare. Really staring at me. Really is staring at me. Why? I have questions. I have many questions. I have many questions for my sister now. I will be asking her many questions tomorrow. What? What is she? We share an, an Amazon account. And so now I have many questions for her and what she just ordered. Um... What the heck? I even brought it in today, but I don't open any packages that aren't mine. Switches. Dang, you stalking your sister now? Oh, I also could just walk 10 steps over there and just ask her why she bought it. Keyboard. Oh, I guess I didn't, maybe I didn't buy it from... Keyboard switches. Fucking spell switches. Hmm. I could've sworn I got something. Let's see. I got this one for my birthday last year. 2022. Trying to find these switches cuz I wanna know now. Ooh, they might be that one. 65? If it's, yeah, okay, so... Fumi, what was your guess on what they were? So these are, are, are the Gatoron mechanical, uh, brown switches. Um, tactile switches. Yeah, tactile. Yeah, cuz the original, um, switches that came with this keyboard, with the ergonomic keyboard, the one that has a split key in the middle, um, they were way too sensitive. They were way too sensitive for me to do anything. So I have a slight issue with my assignment is I can't move forward until I get this first part done. I can't do anything until I get this first part done. Um... I know a bit about, I know a bit about keyboards. I made a keyboard for my sis for her birthday. I spent 8 hours doing everything. This one I was given, this, let's see. Well, one of them, um, I have a Royal Clutch, which I just bought as it is from Amazon. Um, my Echo Gear keyboard, the ergonomic split keyboard in the center. That one I could have gotten to make myself, but honestly, I just kinda went for a pre-made one and then just switched out the keys to my liking. I know this assignment, like I need to, I need to ask people questions and I can't go on to the next assignment until I ask people questions. And it's just kind of like, frick! What am I supposed to do? What am I supposed to do? What am I gonna do? What should I do? Um... Cuz like... Dang, didn't know you were also somewhat into keyboards. I am, I am. My sister is more into keyboards than I am, but I do enjoy my keyboards. I have, I'll, with my Royal Clutch keyboard, I also did switch out the keycaps for, um, I think these are jelly caps. Think. I think these are jelly caps. I don't remember. I converted my sis. She can, she can ever go back. Oh, she can't ever go back. Uh, that's what my sister did to me. Like it's hard for me to type on my, um, on my laptop. She can, she can never go back. I underst-, I can understand gibberish. Ah, what to do, what to do? I can look at that, hmm. I would like to finish that today, though. Or tonight. Really, now, understand gibberish, just for the most part, I can. I've sent text messages, text messages in gibberish before. I've sent, I've sent pure gibberish text messages and then I'll go back to it in the morning and people will be like, "So what were you trying to tell me?" And I'll just be like, "Oh, I fell asleep mess-, sending that message." And so, to me, it looked like words. But now that I sent it, not words anymore. How about chicken scratch? I try. I try. My sister, my sister has chicken scratch for her handwriting. I have a joke for you later, Fumi. I have a joke for you later. I can't say it in stream, though. Cuz it would dox both of us. Can I make something up? I also just don't want to talk to someone. A joke, you say? It really is just a joke. It's a casual joke. It's a very casual joke. It's a bad joke, though. Bad in the sense that it's what Fumi would call a dad joke. You know, I might just, let's see. Ooh, ouchies. You know, I'm just gonna take a conversation I had in the past and go off of that cuz I really wanna get this done. Listen, man, you need to get out of your comfort zone, so you should go and talk to peeps. I am talking to peeps. I am talking to peeps. Now that you say that, now that you say that, guess what I'm doing? Guess what I'm doing? No, it has, it would have to be someone that I, I know. It would have to be someone that I know. Fumi, just for that, I am, I am doing... Oh, now I kinda wanna get some. Fumi, pick a color. Or Rui, pick a color. Someone pick a color. That's tr- The... Eh, blue? Perfect. Perfect. Perfect, perfect, perfect. Um... Hat. That's kinda funny. Oh, never mind, then. Why do I feel scared all of a sudden? No reason to be. Why would I do that? That was kinda stupid. Let me just do this. This is what I normally do. Give me like 3 minutes and you will see what I'm doing. Give me like 3 minutes and you'll, you'll see what I'm doing. I like to meme a lot. If you have not realized that yet. Come on, where'd you go? Come on. Where'd you go? You were just here. Okay, so it should be in there. Okay, chat, how do we call the cops on a streamer? Hey, 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 hey. There's no calling on cops. I have done nothing wrong. I have done nothing wrong. I think I just hit the wrong button, to be honest. Yeah, I might have. There we go. Here it is. Why does it look like that? I don't want that. Click that. Chacha. And then we do this and we delete that and then we bring this back over here. And then we do File, Save. Insert, no, Save As. Oh, shoot. Cancel. Wait, did I not save it? Save As. This. Save. Okay, no, it saved. It's saved. So why can't I find it? File name not found. Let me try that again. Alphabetical, alphabetical. There we go. This little dude. Ooh, held up. Hmm, I did that wrong. I did that wrong. So we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this. And we're gonna re-save that cuz I did that wrong. And then, Save, Save, Save. Yes. Guys, technology really isn't my thing. Properties, Browse. Um, pictures? Pictures. I said 3 minutes. This is longer than 3 minutes. This, there we go. Fumi, I am talking to a peep. Are you happy? I am talking to a peep now. Are you happy? I'm now talking to a peep. You have to be happy about that. Let's see. Factoid, hello. Officer, please. Hello, Factoid. Hello, welcome in. Yeah, officer, she's right here. I, my day was, my day was okay. Um, well, Fumi wanted me to go talk to a peep. So I brought a peep here. I knew you were gonna do that. So the peep is just gonna chill with me on this book. The peep is gonna chill with me on the book. Biggy's like, I know what she's doing. I felt the pun. Broken! Broken, 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 broken. What happened? Did someone buy your merch? I'm so sorry, chat. A few people? Yes! Not what I was gonna say, though? Oh, what was it then? Wait, wait, wait. What did you wanna say? What were you gonna say? What were you gonna say? What were you gonna say? "Forgive me for I have sinned." "Forgive me, Father, for I..." Fumi just like, "You terrorize." "You terrorize me in my stream. I'm coming here to terrorize you." Frigga-, let's see. So I was searching around my house for my passport, right? And guess what I ended up finding? What did you find? Also, Rui, these things are called peeps. The little blue thing? Cuz you asked for a col-, you said blue for color, so I picked a blue peep. So these are literally just marshmallows. What did you find, Broken? I just choked on my water. Broken. Broken. I see we're gonna be doing another call sometime soon. Oh my gosh. Okay, we're gonna, we're just gonna make something up for this assignment. I also identified my passport. I'll look for it again later. Let's see, let's see. Let me read what everyone else wrote. Let me, hmm... Oh... I feel, um... They broke in. They bought you the VR headset? Broken, they bought you the VR headset? Oh my god! That is insane! They got you the VR headset? Oh my gosh, Broken! That is... Oh my gosh! I joined her on VR chat and she was like, "You know I'm a sugar mama, give me your throne." Oh, my goodness. Oh my goodness, Broken. Oh my goodness! She terrorizes me on stream, she terrorizes- She terrorizes me on my stream. She terrorizes me on her stream. At this point, she's just a Terry. Please, US government, send help. No! No! I told you I'm mean and menacing! You didn't believe me! I know, tell her I'm looking for one. Biggy! That's insane, though. Cuz you only have four things on your throne, and they're all like, expensive things. I mean, yeah. But she says... Here, she said, "I got money here, 360 for-" Oh my gosh! Oh my gosh, I could, I- Nah, I- That is insane. That is insane. Jeez. Okay, now to... Now to... Hmm... Falsify this, this, this assignment. Rui's just like, "Let me, let me go take a look at this." Broken, how's your stream? I forgot to do this. I'm really trying to... Who, why, and what did they say? I know, I know who I'm doing. And Nix says she doesn't lie. For shame, Nix, for shame. I don't lie. I don't lie! I said I'm mean and menacing, did I not? The people who normally bully me in chat are not here to bully me in chat. We have, we have the nice people at night. Until they wake up. Until they wake up. Um, no, I actually, now that I'm thinking about this, I know the perfect person. I had a conversation with them not too long ago. I had a conversation with them not too long ago. I need their number. If I can't find my passport, I will get a new ID, but I can't be bothered right now cuz I need to... Make an appointment. Mmm... Now that, now that you remind me that, I have an appointment I need to make as well. The mushy car is having issues. Uh, Say2, uh, thank you for the stretch. Am I okay? For some reason, Say2 just knew when to come back. And redeem those, cuz my posture was bad. My posture literally that moment, just like, went, "Nope." Uh, Say2, I didn't get that sock yet. Your car has a problem? Yeah, so, um... Because it was so cold the past two days- Wait, Biggy, you were in the VUZ when I was sa- talking about my car problems. Cuz you asked me what kinda car, and I said, "Take a guess, I'm not telling you." Um... But yeah, because, um, you don't remember? That's okay. Um, because it's been so cold recently, my car refused to turn on for two days. Posture check, stretch. That was a really nice stretch. Hydrate. Uh, my car refused to turn on for two days. And so, the third day, I finally got it to turn on. Um, but, everything in my car... Has... Reset? And I don't know how to... Go back... And change that. Rui, Rui's just on top of it with a hic- hiccup counter. I thought I heard a sound just now. That... Is out of the question. What sock? By reset, what do you mean? Um... So all of the electrical functions in my car just no longer work... Or have reset to when I first got the car. Nothing, Nix, don't worry about it. Um... No, not a fuse, it's actually within the, the... Working... Part of the car. I'm trying not to say what car I have. For the second I say something, it's gonna tell, say what kinda car I have. No, I just don't, I don't know how to... Fix it correctly. Yes! The second I say something, it's just gonna, it's gonna be like, "That's the car you have." Fumi's just like, "I know, I know." Say2? Nah, not Elon Musk's car, nah. I wish. I wish. N- um, Say2? I feel concerned. But at the same time, it's broken? And so... I feel like, if this is, I know where that conversation is going. Um... I feel like I know where that conversation is going. So I'm not gonna ask any more questions about what this is about a sock. Not gonna ask what this is about. Cuz if it's a broken conversation, that's all I need to know. If this is a broken conversation, that's all I need to know. Um... Let's see, I know exactly. Someone give me a fake name, please. Wait, do I need a fake name? No. I don't need a fake name. That doesn't make any sense. What doesn't make any sense, Biggy? What doesn't make any sense? I mean, socks can, hmm, an embolism? 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 We're BSing this whole thing. I could've frickin' just texted Hana, I'm stupid. I'm pretty sure Hana's awake right now, too. Okay. That was a quick typeup of, this is the BS I'm going to submit. Let's see. Doesn't make any sense. I mean, socks may use from getting embolism, do you drive a smart car or something? As I need a look up, what is a smart car? No, I do not, cuz those things look so dangerous. Those things look kinda dangerous to me, I'm not gonna lie. Okay, on to the next one. Finally. Yeah, it's really tiny, it, it's, it's too dangerous. Way too dangerous. Please don't be a video right away. Why do they do this? Why do they do this to me? Like, looking at this makes you wanna go to sleep. Oh my gosh! I'm gonna send quick all of them, dang it. Okay, this one's an easy answer. Oh, that's a lot to read. This is such a sad thing that I'm reading. I know it's not real, but like it's sad. How do you spell that word? Hmm, sorry, spell? Yeah. Can I finish this section before the five minutes are up? Nexus. Empathic, got it lol. You're just like making like a little notepad of me, just like, this is what I should know. Ah, I'm so happy we got another section done. I am not though, I'm just practicing ukulele. Ooh, that sounds fun. What time do you sleep, Fumi? I have four sections left, but... What? That's done, that's done. Where is the next one? Oh, this one. So, one, two, three, four left. Hey, 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 you drank that at 5pm. You drank that at 5pm, from what I heard. And it wasn't that much caffeine. Plus you liked it. That was seven hours ago, maybe eight hours ago. You guys didn't hear anything. You guys didn't hear anything at all. Nexus actively fighting a water bottle. No, that's not right, that's no, not a water bottle. It was that loud? Lose your own sleep around 10 or 11? I feel like I've raided you later than 10 or 11. Gonna wake up around 5 or 6am. Okay, that makes sense. I feel like I know where this question is coming from. Also, the fact that you guys are still here surprises me very much. I didn't think my study stream would be that entertaining for people to really stick around. I was just feeling lonely and decided, you know what, let's just toss up a stream. Whoever joins, joins, but chances are, no one's gonna join. I like you guys, that's why I was, I was lonely, so I started up a stream. I just didn't think anyone would join, cuz it's not anything fun or interesting. But hello and welcome back, Mr. Teespoons. As I munch on a gummy worm. At 1 in the morning. I do enjoy your guys' presence and company. It is very nice. Yes, sure. Welcome back again. How's the hot springs? How are the hot springs? Fumi, I'm gathering info about you, so I can give you two full, but you've given me... I spend a lot of time in Fumi's chat, just bothering him. I really do. I think the other, I think it was yes, was it yesterday, Fumi? I sa- I think I said. It's great, but had to cut early. Aww, that's sad. Why'd you guys have to cut it early? I broke out and... No, is he okay? Is he okay? That's not good. Oh no. Mr. Teespoons, is your brother okay? Is he okay? He's okay now? Okay, that's good, that's good. I'm glad he's okay. Wound, open wound in hot water. Yeah, open wound in hot water is a no-go. That's a big no, that's a big no-no. That's, that's a, you don't do that. You don't do that. No, 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 no. Broken, those, that, I love those emotes. Uh, but I was saying earlier, it's like, I think it was yesterday. I was in Fumi's chat and I said, "I'll catch you tomorrow," and he's just like, "What? Are you, are you assuming that I'm planning on streaming tomorrow?" And I'm just like, "Yeah." "I'm assuming you're planning on streaming tomorrow," and he's like, "Yeah, you're right, I am." Me refusing to take cold showers while I have a fresh tattoo. Refusing to take? Oh... Yeah... I didn't think about that before. That's also cuz I don't have any tattoos. Or do I? I will deal with the burn of hot water with a fresh tattoo, but I will not take a cold shower. Dang, Broken. Dang. So we know, we know that Broken enjoys pain. I think we knew that already though. Maybe. Maybe, maybe. I was about to say... That you enjoy pain? That you, that Broken enjoys. I don't have... See, 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 we have... No, I'm not gonna say what I was, oh, no, no. I know Broken very well. Okay, listen, I don't stream every day. Prove it. Prove it, Fumi. Prove it. The cold water, but cold water is more pain than hot water on a fresh tattoo. Really? Someone, shouldn't you be doing cold water then? So you can feel the pain? I despise being cold. It's like one of my most hated things in life. Look at my dates that I streamed. I literally didn't stream for two days straight last week. Okay, fair, fair, fair. Fair. I didn't stream for a full week, like a full week of... Actually, Broken, you didn't stream for a while. You didn't stream for a while. I think everyone is mellowing out a little bit. I don't know what to stream. That's hard. I know when I was doing my stream this morning. I found it hard to pick what, did my candle go out? I found it hard to figure out what I wanted to stream. Cuz I'm just kinda like, do I just wanna go straight into a study stream? Do I want to play a quick horror game and then go into a study stream? I just really didn't know. And it's, that's kinda hard, like when you don't know what to stream. Cuz like I also didn't think like anyone would wanna go to a study stream. Which is also still why I'm questioning. Which is why I, look at me. Which is why like I'm still questioning why half of you guys are still here. At a study stream, cuz I honestly don't, oh, I put my candle out. I put my candle out on accident. Oopsies. Oh well. It was an, let's see, I mean, I drop boxes on stream. That's true. And like I would just do just chatting generally, but I have people talking 24/7, so just chatting is hard. It is, it is. Even I sometimes find just chatting streams a little bit difficult. Evil can do them just well. He, he, evil is just podcast city. But I do find it hard to do just chatting streams sometimes, if you're not doing anything. Can I spell? Yes, I can. Fumi, you draw boxes, but you're, you have a very entertaining chat. But then also like you don't mind too much if you don't get a lot of progress. I would draw on stream if I still drew in general. But I don't. Oi, 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 what do you mean, progress? You... There are some times, like I'll, I'll leave your stream for a little bit, come back and just, nothing's changed. Like today. Like today. Sis, please, it is just that you need new eyes. No, 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 you need new eyes. Our vision is pretty much the same. I was able to, Nexus comes into my stream, here's something about... I suddenly forgot how to read. I've suddenly forgotten how to, the English language. Hmm, lemme, 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 lemme... Lemme, lemme, um, I'm just gonna take a drink of my, my, my liquid water. Kombucha. Ah, for some reason, for some reason, Fumi, Fumi's messages, I can- Fumi, Fumi's messages I can read. "I was able to get some general sketch of what I wanted to do." Okay. Cap, my eyes are better. Or I mean, my sight. You're, yeah, it's a little bit better. Tiny, but you know it's true, my stream is when you can't... You, yeah. Normally, depending on who you stream with, Broken, I will either have your stream unmuted, or I'll pop in, say hi, stick around for a little bit, hear something, leave, then come back in hopes for it's better. Yeah, you can't, you can't watch Broken's stream without headphones. You can't, unless you live alone. But even so, like, if you have, if you're living in an apartment... Oh, man, don't listen to Broken on speaker. Broken, remember that one time you were telling me someone was watching you on their TV? Fumi? Descriptions? I don't wanna, uh... Let's see, I think you should be able to, but make sure they don't understand English easy. Broken doesn't, they can't understand English or Hebrew. You got two languages to dodge there. But English is definitely a very, very, very large, very big, it's, it's spoken pretty much everywhere. So, unless you're, you're living in Antarctica? Unless you're living in Antarctica or somewhere where there's literally no English whatsoever? Which I can't think of any places. Oh, maybe like, the... Untouched... Untouched civilizations in the rainforest? How, I don't know how to do this. Like... I mean, I was talking about tags with people while one of my viewers were watching me on the family. About tags with people while one of my viewers was watching me on the family TV, but their family didn't understand English, so weird in the clear. See, that's where like, it's like, good, like, your family doesn't understand English. But like... But like, Broken is, um, Broken is, um... The king of not safe for work. Broken is the definition of not safe for work. If you open up the dictionary, it says Broken's name. Yeah, yeah. You're weak. Exactly, Broken will do anything, like, he's like, you don't need to know any languages. I need to check out his channel? Will Moe be happy that you're checking out Broken's channel? I'm gonna turn this way. You guys do whatever you want in chat. I'm gonna turn this way. I'm not looking at anything. Wait, I'm, wait. What's up? I mean, I don't... But I can make an exception tonight. Nix, clear the chat quick before our mother walks into chat. Who is the mother? Who is, oh, welcome here, let's see. I think you've also mistaken that Broken is also my mom. Oh my gosh. Um, I will now be debating as to whether or not this vod will be put onto YouTube. Oh my gosh, oh my gosh. In my chat! Fumi is just playing right into this. This is, oh my gosh. Fumi, Broken, Broken, Fumi? I was gonna have introductions later on the week? Because Fumi asked a request of me? But it seems like you have two, you two have met each other. Fumi, this is who I was talking about, by the way. This is who I was gonna, who I was gonna, um, ask for your request. I could have guessed. Yep, there you go, you got it right. Really, really came back in an interesting moment. I really kind of did not put much effort into that question. Velfia, hello? Oh my gosh. There's so much flirting in my chat. Hello, Velfia, how are you? Let me timestamp this, 2:38, we'll do 2, 2 hours and 30 minutes in, is when there is a lot of flirting. Sleepy? I apologize to anyone who was in chat. Velfia, you should get some sleep. You should get some sleep. Or it seems like a couple of people have fallen asleep during the stream. Really is scarred. Get some sleep, Velfia, but thank you for stopping by. Uh, no. Why? Get some... You're sleepy, you should get some sleep. Is it not bedtime? When is bedtime? When is Betty-bye-time? "I must stay awake." Why must you stay awake? What is it that has you staying awake? I love the different conversations in the chat right now. "I slept for seventeen." Bye, Mr. Teaspoons. Ooh, have fun, Broken. You slept for seventeen hours? Velfia? That is a lot. I've never slept more than fourteen hours. Dang, were you really tired? Or did you just like have, did, were you busy like the day before? And that you slept that long, or were you, did, did you just sleep that long? But you're sleepy now after seventeen hours? Oh my goodness. "I worked a lot." That would, yeah, that would make sense. That would make sense. You worked a lot, you slept seventeen hours. Of course you're sleepy now, because that's pretty much your body just telling you to get more rest. But what, how, how is your, how's your day been? How's your day been? "It's alright, I get to relax." That's good. That's good. It's always nice to be able to relax. Hopefully, hopefully, this is a relaxing stream for you, just to wind down. I know I'm not really doing much, but hopefully, hopefully it has some kind of impact on you, maybe. "I do have a Discord, you, feel free to join it." Feel free to join, it is an open server for everyone. Those little emotes are so cute. They're so cute. Hydrate? "I will hydrate." Posture check? Posture check is good. We did a recent posture check. And I will hydrate. Thank you for the hydrate, Rui. Everyone else who I haven't asked yet, I think I asked everyone, but how's everyone's day so far? Or, let's see. How's everyone, how was or is everyone's day? Welcome, welcome, thank you for joining. Oh, and you even did your, you even did introductions. Velfia or Val? Why you're, why, it's so cute. "Dislikes work hobbies, letterings, DMs, anytime, anywhere." I love that. That is great. That is, that is so cute, I love that. I'm only now noticing Mr. Teaspoon's introduction and Ruiz's introduction. It's like, Mr. Teaspoon is, "I'm a spoon." And then Ruiz is a dragon. That's so cute. Ah... You guys are all so cute. You are a hobbit. You are. Don't mind me as I'm watering my tree. Also, feel free to, to water the tree. Everyone has, has a good time watering the tree. That's the only perk of being in this, in the server, is you to water a tree. Did I spell that right? I think I did. Hmm, I'm trying to get like as much work as I can done before I go to bed, because I feel like there's a lot of things that I need to do tomorrow on top of like, school stuff. So I'm just kind of like, I don't know if I'll actually like have time to like, honestly, like, do anything in general. Twenty-seven minutes to do that? Is there a way I can just like zoom past it? Um, how many sections does this have? Let's see. I just need to do one, two, that's gonna take one, another hour to do. That'll be one more hour. And then it'll be done. Ah, you know, let's, let's just see how far I can get into it. Let's see, this is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen sections to that. Let's see, this is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen sections to that. Okay. Let's see, so I think... I think everyone is just chilling in chat now, so I'm just gonna, we're gonna skip. I mean, if you guys want, if anyone wants to talk at all. But I think most people have mellowed out and headed to bed. I do appreciate everyone being here though. I really didn't think that many people would come by and hang out, just because... All I'm really doing is typing on a keyboard. Okay, why is your age ninety-six million moons? Ooh, I will pause this, I will explain this. We will, we will take, we will take... We will take the break. So my age is ninety-six million moons, because when I was exiled from the Elven Realms, I was sent to live in Limbo, where, um, the gods had given me a house and a library. And I didn't understand the concept of age. And so, what I did was I counted, I counted how many moons I saw when I was in Limbo. And so each moon represents a day that I was alive. And so, if you calculate ninety-six million moons, if you can do the math, if you can do the math, you can figure out how old I am in human years. And so that is my age in moons. Everyone has attempted to do the math. Everyone has attempted to do the math, I know how much it is. Um, but it does not correlate to my actual age. We, we'll, we'll see, Velfia, we'll, we'll see if you can, if you wanna do the math, you can. If not, then my age is just ninety-six million moons. It's a fun little thing. I'd rather not. It's okay, everyone likes to do it every once in a while. If you're ever curious, just take ninety-six million moons divided by three hundred and sixty-five. I am an old elf. I'm a very old elf. Alright, well I need to start getting ready for bed, so that, so I hope that the rest... I really can't read suddenly. Alright, well, don't look in the Discord? Alright, well I need to start getting ready for bed, so I hope that the rest of the stream goes well, it was fun chatting for a bit. Remember to, remember sleep is important, so please sleep with a lot of Kami. And goodnight, tri-state era. Ah, Fumi, goodnight, Fumi. Have a, have a good night, Fumi, thank you for stopping by. Um, I will get sleep eventually. My hope is really just to sleep in tomorrow for a little bit. Um, cause normally I get, I get woken up around like eight in the morning, so I'm hoping to sleep in tomorrow. Don't look in the Discord, literally says, please look in the Discord. I have been awake since before the breaking of the first silence, in that time, I had many dreams. Ah, wait. I love that. I love that. Velfia, don't look in the Discord, literally screams, please look in the Discord. I love that though, that is great. Velfia, if you're tired, you should get some sleep though. Even though you worked seventeen hours before, that just means that you're so tired that you need more sleep. Ah, never? Velfia, please, go to sleep? Pretty please? Your emotes are so cute, I love that. But, but sleepy time is good for you. Betty by time is good for you. You can go into dreamland. It's good for you. Says a person who's yawned five times in the last minute.
Re? Re? It's bedtime. It's bedtime. Time to go to sleep for everyone who is... Sleepy and tired.
I don't know what time zone most people are in.
Velfia, it's bedtime. It's bedtime, Velfia. You don't wanna go to bed? With the bed warm, I think. Unless you like sleeping in the cold. It's bedtime. It's bedtime.
Not yet. When is it bedtime then? What time, what time is bedtime for you? When do you normally go to sleep? I'm very cold right now. When I feel like it? So then let me ask, cause you're also a streamer. Let me ask. Rui is just here to do the hiccup counter. Rui here, is here just like, I'm ready to get every single hiccup you're gonna ever have. Cause Velfia, you're also a streamer, wha, do you have a normal sleep schedule? Do you have a normal sleeping schedule? Oh man. Oh boy, boy. Let's just say I try my best to. Oh, that's concerning. Cause like I feel like I've seen you awake... Uh, maybe the same times I'm awake, so I'm assuming... I'm thinking you're in like, a close enough time zone? Cause I don't think I've ever seen you like stream super late before. I don't think at least. So I'm thinking you're prob, maybe in the sa, like general time zone? So technically right now would be the time you'd be asleep. Um, I've seen you stream here and there, and then I'll see Canadian time zone, okay? Okay, 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 and so yeah, and then like I'll see you in other people's chats. I'll see you in other people's chats, so I'm just like, okay. Probably same time, close time zone. Oh dang. Wait, that's, that's early. It is, um, now that you say that, I don't wanna say my time. It's one thirty in the morning. Ah, yeah. I know, I have no right to say anything, cause it's one thirty in the morning for me, and it's... Eleven twenty-eight for you. I have, I have no right to say anything. Hmm, I think I know how to answer this question. I might just get through half of this and then finish the rest in the morning. Cause then that will make me feel better about what I really need to do. Hmm, how do I spell that? Hmm... It's all good, you're, you are just in your three, you, hmm... It's all good, you're just in a three hour future right now. Three, yeah, yeah. Three hour future. That's so interesting. Time to, time to zip forward or zip backward in time? Time. Timey-wimey. Timey-wimey wibbly-wobbly. Wait, that emote looks familiar. Where do I recognize it from? I recognize it from somewhere, I just don't know where. I'm trying to remember where, but I don't. This one? Um... Maybe not then. I guess it just looks familiar. I think it just looks familiar. Oh, that one's cute. That one's cute. Without a clue, hello, welcome and thank you for the, the re-subscription. I feel like this has been planned for some reason? For those of you who are here from the beginning, I feel like this was planned. I'm not, we're not, the attempt is not to get flustered again. Thank you, thank you for this, uh, subscription again without, uh, without a clue. Thank you, thank you. Plaid? Was it plaid? Sorry. Sorry. Yeah, today has been, um, interesting with, uh, subs. Um, today has been very interesting with subs. A bit too many to... We've had a lot of subs today, and I, we, I, we... Let's see, are they just re-sub without a clue? Rui? Rui? That's too good. That's too good. That is way too good. Oh my, that is way too good. Oh, that's so, that's, that's so funny. I'm yawning so much. Is that? Oh my gosh, Velfia. That is, you have so many emotes and they're all so cute. Oil at water or oil at fire? You, yeah, you seem to have a lot of, um, emotes. I love that little star dude. Little star dude's so cute. Thank you for stopping by, uh, Clu. I appreciate that as well. Honestly, I appreciate anyway, anyone who has stopped, stopped in today. Because honestly... I'm not that interesting. I'm not that interesting. I feel like... If I was playing, if I was playing a game, that'd be much more interesting than this. This is really just me studying, talking with chat. Hanging out and vibing with you guys. So I really appreciate everyone's, everyone who's here and everyone's company. How so? What do you mean? I just didn't think anyone would be interested in joining in on a study stream. I wanted company, I know. I know how you feel sometimes. I know how you feel sometimes, yeah. Cuz like, sometimes like, yo, you can play games, and people will stop in cuz they wanna see how the game's going. Not that you're, that you're not interesting. Um. I think it's more of a sense of like, I can get hyper-focused, and so then I'll start just going at something, and then I'll forget like, my surroundings. Welcome back, Broken. Um, and then I'll, I'll forget about my surroundings, or like, I'll be doing something and then I'll focus into something else. And so it's just kind of like, I feel like, um, I'm not really like, giving my attention to chat at times. Um. And so like, and like, I'm not really like, talking much while I'm, while I'm typing up away. Kuu, hello, hello. Good eve, after, let's see. Good. Evening, Kuu. Good evening, good evening, how are you? I just think like, during my study streams, I'm not that interesting cuz I'm not really talking much. Is it the AR? Is, it's the AR, AR? I, I, what? It's the, it's the Arvo here. I don't know what Arvo means. What does Arvo mean? Afternoon. Good afternoon, I, I, the attempt was made, it was either afternoon or evening, I had fifty-fifty. It just woke up for a nap. Yeah, cuz you streamed really early, or really late. I love that, Velfia. That is, I want that as an actual plush IRL, I want that. It's so cute, I want him, and I will name him Ducky. If ever get him, he will be named Ducky. He is so cute, I love him. Yes, he is so cute, and he will be na, known as Stabby Ducky. He's so cute, so I force him to nap and call me when he wakes up. Good, he should take a nap. But Stabby Ducky is so cute, Velfia. He's so cute, I want him. I want, I feel like he'd be so, he would be so soft. Fire and water, fire and water is what I'm looking for. No, oil, fire and oil. No, oil and water, oil and water. He's on a headache, yeah. Look up Gudetama on Netflix? Only mine? Kuu, that's so cute. Gudet, I, Rui, I think I know what you're talking about. I think I know what we're talking about. Gudetama. Gudet. Gudetama. If I can spell. I, oh, look at the little duckie! Oh, he's so cute! Oh, what a little duckie is so cute! The little duckie is so cute! Oh, he's so cute, the little chicken is so cute! He's so cute, Ayana, why are you awake? Hello, Ayana, but why are you awake? I love you, but why the heck are you awake? Though I saw your name and I looked at the clock. Hello, Ayana, how are you? I'm packing, I'm, I move back to campus tomorrow for my last semester? That's exciting! Oh my, that's exciting! I'm wide awake, Velfia. Also, Kuu, what are we studying? Um, I'm doing some last-minute cramming for some assignments that are due tomorrow at nine PM. When I say cram, normally like, when people say cram, it's like, you're doing a couple hours early. When I say cram, I'm doing it like, twenty-four hours in advance. Cuz I know it's gonna take me that long to do it. Wide awake, Pog. I never understood the meaning of Pog. I hear people say it all the time, oh snap, you're done when that timer's up. Um. So. Honestly, chat was a lot more active earlier. Chat, chat was a lot more active earlier, so what I was doing earlier was twenty-five minutes of studying, and then ten minutes of talking, twenty-five minutes of studying, then ten minutes of talking. But chat has been very mellow for the past, like, hour. So the timer has just kind of been going. Yeah, I'd make it so that like, in my calendar and everything, um. I want the long version, give me the long version, Kuu. Give me the long version. I, yeah, in my mind, I make everything do twenty-four hours in advance. Give me the long version. Can't even say, aww. Can anyone send messages? No signal. Mr. Teespoons, thank you for stopping. Poggy connected! I feel, Mr. Teespoon is so funny. Honestly, so funny. I don't wanna redo this whole thing, though, it's a thing. Oh, let's go, we got them both right. Hmm, collective. I do, Australia needs better, better signal? Oh, Mr. Teespoons are also in Australia? I didn't know that. Oh. Ayana, I do remember, I could never forget. I'm down bad for signal. Why do I find that so funny? It comes from my face. It comes from a face, it comes from a face, an ex-streetfighter pro made in April Fool's video where he acted extremely excited about the, about the game Pog. Yeah, you, you, you get used to it, Spoonie. Oh, you moving to Australia? You're moving to Australia? Is that what this is? Up good? Puff, up, up good? Ayana. Kai, does Australia have fiber? Eat the grass. Moving for studies? Ooh, exciting! Some places do. Don't know which, it's basically guessing. Like GeoGuessr yesterday, Kuu. But Ayana, yes, I remember Kayla. Is there updates? Aw, man, really, we need to get to the You're, well, aren't, you're heading back to campus tomorrow, aren't you? We'll come, we'll, we'll, no, I hate her, I just wanted to remind you. Remind you of the, of the, the torture. Yes, we will definitely hang out, um. Maybe in the summer. Y'all have breaks, I know we're both super busy, but we can plan something. Yes, give me like, a three-week notice. I'm not kidding. I'm not kidding. Let's see, how am I gonna stream? Mr. Teespoons, if I can stream, if I can stream at, at an upload speed of one? You can stream. Legit, I noticed day one, my internet was like Zoom, was like Zoomies, and I asked what happened. Good, like Spoonies, welcome to hell. Good luck, Spoonies, no worries, summer sounds good. Summer sounds good, yeah. It's not too far away, it's a couple months away. You come back, I come back, we all good. Oh, I only got one question wrong, and I had to redo it. Well, time to upgrade to four eighty. Is it upgrade or is it downgrade, Mr. Teespoons? I'm at four eighty P, are you upgrading or downgrading? Eh, as the internet issues is less, is less that it slows. It is, it is, don't get me wrong, it's more that it's inconsistent. Oh, that makes sense. I do seventy, seven twenty? I've thought about switching up to seven twenty P, but I've already seen that my stream legs a good amount at four eighty P, and I don't wanna go down any more than that. I don't use ten eighty, I, I actually did try ten eighty first, cuz I just didn't know that what it was set to. I didn't know that, that's what it was set to, so I did ten eighty, and I had about a ten-minute delay. Oh, Rui, nice job, you got it! Been thinking of trying ten eighty, but I'm scared what would happen. All around me are familiar faces. Oh, Mr. Teespoons? Is it your family? Is it your friends? Re, let's see. Lot of bad things, a lot of bad things, worn-out places. Re, nah, it's a song, love, Ayana. Ayana. Ayana, and, um, who else just joined in? Kuu, how are you guys doing? I'm Mr. Teespoons, how are you guys doing? Fantastic, best stress, I do, kay. Yeah, I'm dying. I'm dying, that's literally it. Yeah. Say two, welcome back. Good, trying to speedrun Genshin event before it finished. I haven't played Genshin in a while. Not allowed, stop dying and live? No, I refuse. I refuse. I refuse. I will die all I want. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I'm still alive. Say two, she's like, I'm gonna, okay, back to, back to one bar, bye, thank you for stopping by again, Mr. Teespoons. Don't get hurt, be safe, have a good one. Say two. Teespoon, this might be the scuffiest advice I'm giving, gonna give, but says it after he says goodbye. I know more than a few streamers who use their data instead. You know, I've been told the same thing. I've been told the same thing, and that is like, that is really the scuffiest. Yeah, yeah. That's insane, anyone who does that, props to you, I'd rather die than stay on this. There's opious forty gigabytes for forty dollars. I feel like I would use so much data, like, I have a hundred gigabytes on my phone. And I use that to watch streams while I'm streaming. Say two, which is kind of like, you're ignoring my messages, health. I need to see how the apartment is moving in next week, ooh. Ooh. Ayana. Oh. Hey, 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 hey. Time to go eat good food, send pictures, Mr. Teespoons, I want pictures. It's me, I do, I do, I think I still have the photo. I think I still have the photo. Yeah, I'm pretty sure I do. I do, I do. It took me a second, I was like, it's you, and I looked back, oh. Oh my gosh, ah, memories, we love memories. Good and bad memories. Yes, both good and bad memories. Say two, say two, are you okay? Say two, have I, have I neglected you so much? That, that, you, that? Have I neglected you so much? That I have to be threatened with my own emote? Say two, if you want attention, I will give you attention. I will give you the attention, say two. Put the knife down. Emote time. Wait, is that Bulbasaur? Oh, that's so cute, minions. What other emotes do you guys have? I now just wanna see emotes. But I also, feel free to talk as much as you want, but I also wanna just see like, emotes. Cuz that's so cute. The minion's so cute. Alien looking around. Ayana's just like, I love that banana. Oh, look at the bunny! Oh, look at the Pokemon! Oh, Synthetiquil! Velfia, no! Ayana. Say two, it's a clown. A cute clown. Kuu, goof. I love the chaos in chat. Re. Re. Oh, say two, your emotes, they're so cute. Kuu, is that your emote? Say two's emote is so cute. Kuu, is that your own emote? Is that an egg yolk? No, it's not mine. Aw. These are mine? Rui, Rui has a lot of emotes too, actually. Oh, those are so cute. I like the head pats. I need to get, I need to make a head pat emote. I think I got, I think I have another spot for an emote. I'm happy though because my animated emotes got approved yesterday. My animated emotes got approved yesterday, so that makes me happy. These are my own emotes. I, ah, you also have head pats. You also have head pats. It's so cute. Ah, bonk. Love raid. I love that animated one. That anime one is so cute and funny. I don't think the bonk shows the egg very well. It does not. I don't, oh, I, I can barely see the egg. But it's smashing the yolk. My wiggle is being revealed. Ah, you have a wiggle? Um, my animated emotes took, I think, two and a half weeks to be approved. And they were finally approved yesterday. Ah, frick, ah. Hmm, how far along? Oh, I have one, two, three, four sections left on this one. If you look closely, this is a small, small? Smon? Snom? Oh, I see it, I see it. I think you did show me your wiggle. I better try to get some rest. It was nice talking to you. Aw, thank you, Ayana. Thank you, thank you. I will Okay, you know, you know how busy I am. I will try to co- stay in contact. I have not been good at that with anyone. But thank you for stopping by, Ayana. Thank you, thank you. Good night to you. See you. Good night, good night, good night. I know, I need to, I need to make more emotes. I also need to make more emotes, Kuku. Let's turn, let's see. I'll just keep, keep that back and put that back there for now. But I will rechat if you guys, if you guys do say anything. I just have a couple more sections. Can't wait to spam my emotes on other people's streams. That would be so cute. That would be cute. There you go, spam kuku's. Spam kuku's. So glad it's not me. What do you mean, Filia? Hmm, I'm trying to think of what to type for this. Oh, that was the first time. Wait, we need to make sure that it's still no copyright. Okay, we're still good with the music. We actually went through the whole music. I have some pretty mean ones, but I'm in no rush. You've pretty mean emotes? Oh, I'm curious now. I'm curious. Hmm. Hmm. Channel points? Oh. I always forget what I have for my channel points. SpongeBob. Wow, I like turtles, coffin dance, fun fact about me, emotional damage. Read the whole sentence. No English. Five minutes of ASMR. Big brain. I like that big brain one. I'll have to, I'll have to check out what your channel points are the next time I'm near your stream, Filia. I know I was lurking in your stream the other day. I'm trying to write, think of a prompt for this. I'm trying to figure out what I wanna write. Oh no. Is it not on the stream? Is it not on the screen? What? What, where are my sound alerts? What? What? Basically, I'm saying I'm scared. Twitch, now? You did the coffin dance? There we go. I thought it was just delayed. No, it just did not pop up. Cuz I forgot to. I thought I had all of them in, but I guess I've missed. Cuz this is the new, this is a new, um, background, guys. This is what This is what, um, The inside of the mushy house looks like. This is what the inside of the mushy house looks like. The mushy hut? The mushroom hut? This is the inside. This is the inside. And so I did this right before stream. And I thought, you know what? Let's, let's make everything work. But I thought I moved everything over, but I guess not. Mr. Teaspoons, I thought this was delayed. But yes, Filia, I will be stopping into your streams next time. Do be scared because I'm very mean and menacing. I'm very mean and menacing and I will make that known. Cute, cute. Yeah, no, that's a lie. Say two. Say two, biggest lie ever. What part is the lie? Don't believe her. She's incredibly nice in my streams. Guys, I'm mean and menacing. I'm, I'm, I, I can be mean and menacing. Nick, stop lying to people. No one believes me anyways. Be mean to you right now? Okay, see, I got thirty minutes back to city. Safe travels, Mr. Teaspoons. Be mean to you? You're a bully? Say two is, lies. Safe travels, safe travels. God be with me then. Say two is, say two is a meanie and he is a bully. He's a bully. You don't say looks over clip? Which clip? You need a meanie skin slash avatar. That's not being mean. This is weak. That's just complaining to the teacher. Fine. Hmm. Um. Be mean? Um. The difference is I like say two. I can't be mean to someone that I like. Like, you guys are so nice to me in chat. I like you guys. How can I, how can I be mean to the people that I like? I can't be mean to the people I like. It's too hard. Well, I think I win. I, I can't, I can't, I mean. Cough cap. Attempts were made. Attempts were made. Attempts were very much made. Hmm, I'm still trying to figure out what I wanna write for this one. Hmm. Cuz I can't think of anything that I can think, like, I could like do as an experience for this. I feel like the questions have changed a little bit. Hmm. You yawn, I yawn. We all yawn. That's good. That means you're not a sociopath. The yawn test, you're not a sociopath. Filia. Well, the thing is like when you see someone else yawn, not just hearing it, but when you see someone else yawn, There's like a mechanism in your brain that makes you yawn as well. And there was just, there was like a study a long time ago. I don't know if it's still accurate anymore. Where if you don't yawn after seeing someone yawn, that there's something wrong with your mind and that links you most likely being A sociopath, but I too have also like seen people yawn but not yawn afterwards. It's interesting. I'd be then. No, it's too late, Nick. I already accepted it. No, you guys aren't sociopaths. You guys are. I don't yawn when people yawn. Maybe, maybe that study is wrong. Maybe the study is wrong. Maybe that's not the case anymore. Maybe that's not the case anymore. Maybe it's a fifty fifty thing. It could be a fifty fifty thing. It could be. I think I've yawned so many times the last few minutes and I can't think of what I wanna write for this. But I'm also, I have one, two, three, four sections on it. Maybe we're just sociopaths. May, no, you guys aren't. Hmm, let me see if I can retry. Hmm. I think it was this one. Now it's just a matter of like remembering What It was. Ooh. I think it was this one, yeah. Um, I don't remember. Oops. I've read the meaning of both those words. Um, I've forgotten how to do this. I have forgotten. I have forgotten. I wanna say it's these two, but I'm pretty sure I'm wrong. Okay. So I was right, it was that one. No, it's this one. No, it's this one. No. Oh, this is making me kinda mad. Hydrate? Stretch? I will hydrate. You'll do some hydrating? I, you know, funny fact. I actually got really thirsty today. And it was at a point where I was just kind of like, oh, I really need some water, cause I thought back to, I was like, crap, I haven't drinking any water today. And I was just kinda like, oh, and I don't have water with me. This is why I should drink water, so I don't get dehydrated. Okay, I stretched and now posture check. Posture, posture, posture check. I know, I know. I know, I know. I'm bad at drinking water. I'm, I'm really bad at it. I've always been bad at drinking water. I've always been bad at it. Some days are worse. Oops, I think they glitched. Why is hydrate on a thirty minute cooldown? Um. Because Angi, I will hydrate for you again, Koo. Koo, thank you for the hydrate. Um, the hydrate is on a cooldown. Because there was one stream that I did. Where the hydrate button was redeemed. How do I, how to get a free? In one simple step. Um, the hydrate was redeemed forty-six times. In one stream. Moro, mo, mo. Jo. Mojodan, thank you for the follow. Why is there, why is it double? Yeah, I remember that when I was there. Oh, and, and Koo questions why. Koo questions why. I'm him, that's why. I'm him? Hello, Mojodan. I think, there we go. No, that's wrong. One of these. How are you, Mojodan? I'll have to look at that later. That definitely is weird. How are you, how are you? And welcome, welcome. Let's see, I re- let's see, let's see. I'm almost done with this one. Hmm. I know it's that. Yes, yes. Very nice. Um. And then the last one should be this. Okay. But I know it's not completed, cause I haven't finished the other one. Back to learning. I haven't finished that yet. So I can't technically go into the next session. Yeah, about fifteen minutes remaining, that's still a lot to do in that. Hmm, so it's two thirty in the morning for me right now. Um. I'll give you a quick update of my week, for those of you who have stayed with me this whole entire time. I appreciate you guys very much. So, chances are I am not gonna be back tomorrow with another Sussy stream as much as I enjoyed this with you guys. Um, I'm gonna be doing some other things that require me to meet with other people, so I will not be streaming tomorrow. Which is why I did two streams today. Um, that's why, that's why I did two streams today, is cause I knew I would not be streaming tomorrow. And chances are I won't be streaming in the future on Fridays. That's what I believe. Um. But I'm also not a hundred percent sure. And then Monday. Monday, I am going to be very busy. So, depending on how tired I am. Depending on how tired I am, I might come back with a Sussy stream. Or we might come back for the dis- the Sussy Detective. Tuesday, you might get, um, no, no, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be up too early. Tuesday, we're not gonna have a stream. Wednesday, we might have a nine PM or ten PM CST stream. Thursday, we might have a morning stream. Friday is up for grabs, and then Saturday, no stream. Um. But, I'm saying it verbally because this, I'm actually not gonna have a schedule for this week. We're playing this whole week by ear. Based off of my schedule. We're playing this whole thing off of ear this week. So normally I, for everyone who's new here, normally I would put, post my schedule in the disc- in my Discord and on Twitter. Um. But there's a lot of things going on this week. And so I will not be doing um, I will not be doing a schedule this week. So we're gonna skip this week's schedule and we're gonna go into a schedule the week after. I'm also not planning on doing any collabs this week. Because it's gonna be, it's gonna be busy. It's gonna be busy and I know that I don't want to cancel on people. And so I will not be doing collabs that I know that there's a possible chance that I can cancel. So this week is just gonna be solo streams and I think they're gonna be more Sussy streams than anything. But, I'm okay with that. I hope you guys will, can enjoy that as well. So, let's see. That is like my little quick update of the week. And I will al- I will always, um, I will still always post the day, like, if I'm gonna be streaming that day too. So we are gonna go ahead and rate out to Masaki. Cause Masaki is the only one who I have on my screen that is live right now. Go send him some love, he's playing Minecraft right now. Thank you everyone for joining me today, I do appreciate it a lot. Send some love over to Masaki. Thank you everyone, have a good night. Have a good night everyone, good night, good night, good night.